It is six o'clock, we're all here, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting the Greensburg City Council to order. And we begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Roll call, all council members are present, and we have a forum, so we'll proceed with business tonight. First up is approval of the agenda. Any council member have any questions to, on the agenda, or any additions to it?
I make a motion to approve.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda approved. Sis and comments? Heather and Kelly are here, I think want to introduce Dave Lowenstein, I believe, who's doing a mural project here.
So, I'll just give Dave a quick intro. He's mostly a mural artist, but he's done prints there and several other very prestigious collections. Kansas-based, which is great, but has done murals all over the country and actually internationally as well. So, you know, we've brought the mural project to you guys a few different times, just kind of using the temperature on it. So, we decided it was finally time, we had enough information to invite Dave out to do some site visits. So, that's what he's been here doing all day. We've done some community engagement with the seniors, and also the seniors at the high school. So, that was really fun. And just wanted to bring him here in case you guys had any questions or any things you'd like to discuss while we thought Dave and I missed.
David, do you think you'd like to take the counsel?
Well, I'm thrilled to be here. We've been talking about this project on and off for years. And I've had a fantastic day. I think this is a great place to do a community-based mural, which is what I do, work with folks, young and old. And we looked at a couple of great sites, potential sites, none of them we've chosen yet. And I'm thrilled to be able to come back if it works out. And it's a very special place.
Glad you're here, and look forward to seeing your project take shape, if it does. Thanks. Alright. That takes care of sis and comments, so we'll move on to our consent agenda. That includes the minutes of our February eighteenth meeting and appropriations ordinance twelve eighty-seven.
Move to accept the consent agenda?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda approved. Alright, three items of business discussed tonight. First is to review the engineering firm responses for our sidewalks project.
We started this discussion at the last meeting. We received three proposals from the RFQ that we advertised for the sidewalk project. And those were PEC, Schwab Eaton, and BG Consultants. And I included a score sheet for you to complete, which you all did, and tallied those up. The one you have in your packet, I printed out an updated one, I received one more response today, so I've added in those scores. So, averaged all together there, you'll see that on your sheet. It did not change the overall outcome as far as the ranking of which engineering firm came out on top according to the scoring. So, you'll see that PEC did have the highest points, followed by Schwab Eaton, and then BG Consultants.
Counsel, discussion on that ranking form? I think we're pretty lucky to have three well-qualified engineering firms who all would serve us well, but into the day, members do seem to, you know, support going with PEC for this project.
Yeah, I think they, any one of them would have been good. They all seem very qualified. I just, I know with our history of PEC, they're very familiar with Greensburg, more familiar with what it's like to work with them. And I would feel comfortable with them for all of this, with PEC.
And Stacy, just to refresh our minds as far as next steps. If the council's comfortable moving PEC, the next step would be to negotiate a-
A contract with them, correct. And this is on my administrator report, but today I did receive our agreement with KDOT, between the city and the state for these grant funds. So, we just got that today for us to execute our agreement with the state. And then later, once we've selected our consultant, then the state will also send an agreement that outlines who that is, but then, yeah, we'll have an agreement with them.
These engineering fees would also, excuse me, are included in the grant part of it?
Correct.
Or is that on us?
It is included, no. The only costs that there could be to us would involve any sort of, like, right-of-way or easement fees associated. But the design, the consultation, engineering, all of that, and actual construction is all included in the grant funds.
And all the easements should be public road right-of-way, right?
Correct. Yeah, but that's the only stipulation it has in there that that could be on us if there were any costs associated with that.
Before we get too deep into this project, would it be a good idea to possibly educate the residents of town, the property owners and whatnot, of what's going on? And I, because I realize some of them won't understand that we have a grant. And they're going to want to know how much of this is going to cost us as a taxpayer, not being aware that we have a grant that's a hundred percent, you know? I, I think it would be a good idea to somehow let them know where we're at with it. And, and the people that have property that these sidewalks might affect?
Mm-hmm.
You know, is that possible?
Yeah.
Or is that, are we not worried about that, it shouldn't have to?
No, 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 I, I think the more communication we, we can have with our residents, the better. And maybe putting it in the next newsletter that goes out with the utility bills that we got this grant. I know when we got it, I put it out on our Facebook page that we received the grant. But maybe putting something a little more detailed in the newsletter that talks about, here's a grant, it's for a million dollars to do, about sixteen blocks. Here's the proposed areas. And, and they are proposed, you know, it's not set in stone by any means-
Right.
That that's exactly where they would be.
Well, you know as well as I do, there's the coffee shop naysayers that are going to say, you know, wonder what this is going to cost us, you know?
And why is it here?
Raise our taxes.
Why is it in this place and not that place?
Right, right.
I think any, any kind of information we can get out to the public's great, but at the same time, you know, keeping the whole project moving forward, because it's not slated to start right until twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, it's fiscal year, federal fiscal year twenty twenty-six funds, so we're still always-
Well, what, what then prompted me to, to wonder about this was the one engineering firm was looking at, and I visited you about that last week when I brought my sheet in, about if possibly having to move some things that, that, that property owners had that were out by the curb. Signs, or they even talked, they even had a picture of a bar height.
Right. And those are some of the things that will come with the design work, is, is looking at each individual property and where the sidewalk best would go around some of those things, what would need to be moved. I know in some cases, we have existing sidewalk that is right along the street.
Right.
And then there's some that's, you know, ten foot back, or whatever, fifteen. And then there's, how do you tie all that together in, in a cohesive manner?
And in that education process, I mean, if you have a property owner that doesn't have the sidewalk, but it's in, in the design, it's supposed to be there. Say they have an underground sprinkler system.
Right.
We have to move that, who's that on? Is, do we have to pay to have that done?
It'd probably be part of the project, I would assume.
Yeah.
And, and that's why, I know I talked to one property owner when we were first applying for this, like, a year ago, I guess. And the comment made to me was, I think it's great, just make sure you put my yard back how it was. So, you know, progress is messy, and for a time, things will be torn up. But if, whoever the contractor ends up being, we make sure it gets put back nice. But yeah, I think all of those concerns, you know, there's, there's our water meters and things like that, that will need to be taken into consideration. And so, having an engineering firm to help walk us through all of that in the design process.
Is it a possibility, we might have sidewalks that have a lot of little curves in them, you know, things?
Potentially.
That's more of a walking trail.
That's right, well-
There's steps out there.
There's always one of those attacks.
We've wanted trails, we've wanted trails too, so.
I, I, that's just some questions that I had. I know where my son lives in Kansas City, they just redone his whole street. And it, there was no curb in gutters. And so, we planted trees within ten, twelve feet of the street, twenty of them. And they come and tore them all out. And that, that's just questions that, you know? He said, if I don't know this is going to do this, I'd have never planted them. And they're, in their long-range field, they had never talked about it, and all of a sudden, here it was. So, I think education to some of these-
Yeah.
-property owners would be in our best interest.
Mm-hmm.
I think at this juncture, maybe just general, putting that general knowledge to the general public that this project is in process is probably appropriate. But we'd probably have to wait until we get some of the more, you know, far along designs from the engineering firm before we know.
I, I understand that fully.
But at that time, it's again, our job to work with the impacted landowners, property owners, to work with them and minimize the disruption.
Now, we won't know anything until the engineers look it over and make some sort of plan.
And I really see us bringing in those property owners that would be affected to come and say, here, here's what we're looking at, what do you think, what are your concerns? Just, you know, like when KDOT's doing a highway project, they have public meetings, kind of a similar thing.
I think that's only fair in this process.
Absolutely.
Is there anywhere in writing, I'm sure there is, but the widths of our easements and stuff for all those streets? And then to further that, do we have it spelled out, what is allowed and isn't allowed in our easements? City public right-of-way?
Yeah, it, I mean, we have both for trees and for sidewalks, it's in our code.
And fencing.
And fencing, right.
What, refresh my memory, what is the city's easement distance-wise, say, from the curb in?
It varies, correct. It varies on the street width.
It varies?
Yeah.
Okay.
Isn't it usually measured from the center of the street?
Well, that's a good estimate.
Okay.
That'll get you close. But some of those streets aren't as wide as, you know?
Right.
Some are wider.
So.
So, it goes from, like, the middle of the street? In both directions?
That's a good estimate to measure. If this is an eighty-foot street, go to the side, maybe forty, even that's close. But without a survey, you're not going to know.
I'd say that-
So, there is no easement in Bay Street, probably?
Well, the Bay Street is a hundred and twenty, so that-
Yeah.
That includes that easement, so.
So, they'll be surveying involved with this. Because, I mean, for instance, you look over here where the digging has started on this project, and the survey flags are out there, you can see how far those are off. That's where that actual property line is, the rest is the city easement there.
And like, here's just an example, just because I can't think of anybody else. Like, Mrs. Hayes, she has a fence in her front yard. She knows that's in the easement, and when we had that conference, she may not remember it right now, because that was almost twenty years ago. But when she asked it up, if she can put that in, the conversation was yes. But say we have a utility issue, or anything like that, but we need to dig up our easement, that will be removed. You need to know that before you go to the expense of putting that in. And she went ahead and did it, knowing that in advance. So, the things like sprinkler systems, people may not think about it. They just know it's part of their yard and it needs to be driven, like, the rest of it, so.
There's another side to that too, Chris. I've been watering and mowing the city's easement now for a couple of years.
Yeah, that's a whole other conversation. But there's also stuff in the code that says you-
There's, you have to.
I did that for a while too, over.
Yeah.
There, there's stuff in the code that talks about the property owner's responsibility to maintain the easement, and even into the alleyway, as far as like the mowing of. So, yeah, they, they put that in there, it's in there.
I'd like to cover our bases in our code.
Chris, you had a lot of-
It's called negotiations, is what it is.
Discussion in two thousand and seven about trees in the front lawn-
And how high they can be there.
And where it could be, that a lot of, lot of things. We had a book, five hundred pages of different trees that had to be taken out because they were within-
And I hope that we don't have a lot of property owners say, well, why didn't you people think about this at the rebuilding time? When everybody was building houses and stuff like that, why didn't you-
It was talked about.
It was, but I think cost.
Was it part of the master plan?
That, and how much, how much can, can you handle while trying to rebuild a city?
That's true.
And how much can a property owner handle while trying to rebuild their house?
And what's important right now?
Exactly, exactly.
It is in our master plan.
I, I, I haven't a word to live yet, but I've got a nice sidewalk.
The nice thing about the tornado is, especially in areas like right along here, where we're talking, a lot of it will be, there used to be trees in that easement.
They're gone.
Or they're moved back further, the property owner put them further back. So, it's not like they're right up by the curb like they used to be where that would be.
Not going to have to tear out any hundred-year-old trees.
Exactly, exactly.
That sidewalk's going around the tree. We got one, and we're not taking it out.
That's what I mean, we're going to crook inside.
Well, counsel, really what's been forced tonight is to select one of these engineering firms to, again, we've been working on a contract for that design and engineering work for this project. If you guys are ready to do that.
I'd make a motion, do we approve the consulting firm PEC for our sidewalk project?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to move forward with PEC to provide design and engineering firm services for our sidewalk project. Any further discussion? This is something we do on an annual basis, I believe, and that is to approve software renewal agreement with VCS for our HVAC controller software.
Correct, as the mayor said, this controls our, our building controls for heating and cooling, not just here at City Hall, but also the business incubator and Public Works. That's all ran off of our server and computers here, but it does control those other facilities as well. And you'll see that renewal agreement in the packet and what all it includes. It is for five thousand twenty-two dollars for the year. And it's really something we need to be able to control the heating and cooling in our buildings.
If we had normal heating and cooling systems, would we need this? I'm just asking.
No. However, to retrofit to get to normal-
Would cost a lot.
Would be a lot more than that.
I know that.
Yeah.
I just was asking, so. I mean, when you're talking software, then that tells me that-
Yeah. And we did do a software update two, a year ago, two years ago now, that was more than this. So, we're using the most current version and I'm not going to jinx this by saying any of that.
It's a computer deal with.
Yeah, it's software's license, you've got to pay for it, and the software runs our HVAC systems, so.
Do you motion to approve this?
Uh, I believe so, it's over five thousand dollars.
It exceeds, yes.
So, yes.
I'd move to approve this, the heat control system, the software purchase. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the software renewal agreement with VCS for our HVAC control software. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Alright, last up is just a review of one of the city's policies to see if it's still serving the city as we intend it, and that's our nepotism policy.
Section two point seven of our personnel policy handbook outlines our current policy regarding nepotism and hiring of employees. And I've included that excerpt in the agenda packet for your review. Over the years, there've been a couple of examples that we've had of potential employees that would have been qualified to, to work specifically more on a part-time seasonal basis. So, like the Big Well or swimming pool, where this has come up, not so much in full-time positions. And so, considering that we're a small community and our talent pool is smaller than maybe in a large city, I know that there's other small towns that run into this from time to time as well. I just wanted to open it up for some council discussion to see if there's any appetite to maybe amend this policy, to allow, it outlines all the different possible relationships of what's considered family, and it's pretty extensive. But wanted to open it up to see if there's any appetite for the council to amend this policy, to maybe add in some other supervision oversight language to include the city administrator or, or other designated person in situations where a supervisor may be overseeing an employee in a department.
Counsel thoughts would be open to maybe tweaking that policy?
The only thing I would do is add maybe on there, per basis, whoever comes in. You know, one might not be alright, but then the other one, no big deal. So, I don't know how you would word that, but-
Have to review it on a case-by-case basis?
Yeah, something like that.
I mean, like Stacy said, we are small, and a small community, like, sometimes it's almost unavoidable in some situations. But I do think it's not a bad idea to be able to, you know, look at each, each time that would maybe fall into this category and make sure that it would be a, a good fit for whatever position's being hired for.
I think I, if we did maybe loosen that a little bit, I still, I think we would want language maybe to provide additional oversight and checks and balances, maybe, as maybe Stacy alluded to. You know, if you have a department head who would be supervising a direct family member, you know, there'd need to be maybe some input from the city administrator, just make sure nothing is, you know, no improprieties or anything like that's going on. So, I think that language we'd want to put in there, just as, you know, kind of cover our butts type of thing, so. Open to do that.
Is this mainly based upon, like you mentioned, in our summer part-time help, swimming pool, situations like that?
Yeah. And Big Well, part-time, it's come up before. Yeah, it, it's really, it's not full-time positions where I've seen any examples, it's really more in the part-time seasonal.
Maybe we, if we do carve out, carve out an exception, it's just for part-time help?
And that's why I was asking, I mean, I don't, I, I understand the point is that we're a small town and we just don't have a truckload of people to select from. I could have a problem with that, or full-time, then I think we'd have to revisit the deal and look at it a little differently, maybe. Maybe like what Pam said, case by case, and set that review in before we commit it to anything.
And limit it to part-time or seasonal employees?
Yep.
Well, Stacy always has the one to say on anything anyway, because they come to you, I mean, the evaluations and things come to you, the supervisors give it to you, and then you approve or talk to them.
Yeah, for the hiring, anyway.
You know, and the, and races too, and things like that. So, everything stops at Stacy anyway, unless it's something big and then it comes to us. But Stacy always has, we gave her that power.
Is that something that you can kind of reword it a little bit and bring it back for us to go on?
And that's, tonight was more for discussion to see kind of what your thoughts were before I brought forth a, a change. So, just so I'm clear, are you suggesting just part-time seasonal for now?
Yeah, I mean, again, that addresses, I guess, the instances we've had so far. And then again, kind of limits the damage to the city if anything were to go wrong, I guess, potential liabilities to the city. So, maybe just start with maybe language to carve out an exception for part-time employees, seasonal employees. And again, I would like to maybe see, you know, in that scenario, again, city administrator may take, you know, have the authority to step in and make decisions if necessary. Something to that effect, if that sounds reasonable to counsel?
I think so.
You know, and I, I also think too, even if you hire those people, you're going to know whether this is going to work or this is not going to work. Yeah, that gets worse not to.
Then that's personal, okay.
Well, Stacy, that enough to maybe bring the proposed adjusted policy to council at each meeting?
That'll be by resolution.
Okay.
So, next time.
Any other discussion on the nepotism policy? Alright, hearing that, we will move on to city staff reports, Stacy.
Um, last week, I was asked to participate in a virtual meeting of city, county, and economic development leaders from across southwest Kansas in a KDOT Southwest Highway Expansion Advisory Group. Representative Shannon Francis from Liberal called and asked me to participate in that. And it was about an hour-long virtual meeting with people from west of Wichita, south of I-70. So, I think it's forty, forty-four counties, something like that. So, really focusing on all facets of transportation in our area of the state and how to move forward. So, later in March, they'll be holding some listening sessions in, in the region, and I'll let you know when those are. I think there's going to be one in Pratt in the evening, Grape Bend and Dodge. So, there'll be several kind of close to us, if you're interested, they're really seeking community input of all kinds, so anybody can go. So, I'll share that out once I get those dates. Our Public Works team, you may have seen out on the highway, they got one of the poles replaced that was knocked down, the light poles, thereby farm supply. And we're working on the other one today that had more extensive damage to the concrete anchors in the base. So, they're, they're working to, to get that one back up as well. On Friday, we received word from Kansas Housing Resources Commission that our moderate-income housing grant was awarded for three single-family homes to be built on West Lincoln Street that was in our application. And that award is for six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, that's in partnership with Hayes Management, and I called Monica Friday afternoon and let her know the news. So, it'll be a while before that gets going, as well as things, we have to get the grant documents all, and that will probably take a couple of months to get that all executed and then get that project underway. So, that is exciting news, that we were awarded again. I have to admit, I'm pretty shocked that, that we were. I really didn't have high hopes that we would be. So, it was a, a very pleasant surprise Friday afternoon to get that email. Um, this Wednesday will be a statewide tornado drill at eleven AM that happens every spring. So, I would assume our sirens will go off at that time like everyone else is across the state. Excuse my typo if you're reading this. Last week, KPP learned that the Pace project is on pause due to federal funding being on pause. So, really, it's kind of at a standstill, we're still waiting on one environmental study at one of the sites to be completed. But that is on hold until USDA is able to authorize continued work on the project. So, KPP continues to be in contact with USDA, and then has also reached out to some of our local legislation, legislators to try to move that forward, so stay tuned. As I mentioned, I got the grant agreement from KDOT today for the Transportation Alternatives project. And I'll be reviewing that, I sent it to Clayton also to take a look at, just to make sure he didn't have any issues with it before signing it. And then at a previous meeting, it was mentioned when we were talking about the airport, that it had been annexed into the city. Well, the mayor had a visit from the county appraiser who had watched our meeting, and that is not true. That, I'm, I'm pretty sure I misspoke, so I apologize for that. But after some research, that did not happen. That process was looked into and talked about with previous administration. I went back and found where it was in an administrator report that Kyler was going to start looking at it. And then he left a few months later, and I'm not sure. It didn't happen. So, I've done some research of state statute, because that really governs that whole process and what that might look like. I've passed some notes on to Clayton to look at, and the mayor as well, and Clayton's reviewing those. So, it may be a future agenda topic for you for discussion to see if that's something that you want to pursue, what the pros and cons of doing it, why, and why not, what you might want to. And then what that procedure looks like, because there, there is some procedure that governs that process. So, just wanted to, to update you on that and where that stands, so. update you on that and where that stands. So, that's all I've got.
Questions for Stacy? Hearing none, questions for Stacy? Uh, do we have any governing body comments tonight?
Storm sewer cover over there by Quick Shop, looks good. It's kind of been on my radar for a while. It kept getting worse and worse, and I drove by the other day, and it was good.
Yep. They were, Clayton was working on rebuilding that.
Yeah.
It's time to go.
Guess we're not moving around anymore. Didn't pay bill.
Do we have any other governing body comments tonight? Hearing none, since the lights are out, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thanks for your time, everybody.
Haley said six thirty, she's walking out, so I set the timer.
Six thirty-one, sorry, I'm a little late.